I'd like to call this meeting to order. Good afternoon, and thank you for joining us for the ETSU Board of Trustees meeting. Our campus continues to be a center of activity and achievement. This February, we are celebrating significant milestones that highlight the dedication and talent within our university. Our students have demonstrated extraordinary leadership engagement, both inside and outside of the classroom. For example, at the recent Tennessee Intercollegiate State Legislature, ETSU students received multiple recognitions, including the prestigious Carlisle Award and Outstanding Representative Honors. Notably, Kaia Powers, a current ETSU student, has been elected as the governor for the upcoming session, reflecting the leadership qualities that we strive to put in all of our ETSU students. Our faculty, too, continue to be recognized as leaders in their fields. I'm proud to note that Trey Hensley, an adjunct faculty member in our Bluegrass Old Time and Roots Music Studies Program, recently won the Grammy for Best Traditional Blues Album. This achievement underscores the exceptional caliber of our faculty and the profound impact of our programs on the national stage. Our Bluegrass Old Time and Roots Music Studies Program is part of ETSU's Center of Excellence for Appalachian Studies and Services, which celebrates its 40th anniversary this month. It was established to preserve and promote the unique traditions of Appalachia. The center has been instrumental in research, cultural preservation, and community engagement. We look forward to continuing to celebrating their success and contributions throughout 2025. This type of artistic and cultural work not only enhances our regional identity, but it also serves as a significant driver for economic vitality. Earlier this month, the ETSU Research Corporation, in partnership with the State of Tennessee, unveiled the results of the recent Northeast Tennessee Music Census. The census revealed that the music industry contributes $75.9 million annually to our region's economy. The Research Corporation also co-hosted a community summit to discuss these findings and explore ways to further support and develop our regional music industry and ecosystem. Finally, on behalf of the entire ETSU community, I would like to take a moment to thank Governor Bill Lee for including funding for phase two of the renovation of Brown Hall and to update facilities at our Valleybrook campus in his proposed budget. Governor Lee and members of our General Assembly continue to be important supporters of higher education, positioning Tennessee as a leader for both innovation and workforce development. As the core for many of ETSU's science classrooms and research laboratories, Brown Hall is a critical facility on our campus. The updates that we will implement will enable us to continue providing cutting-edge educational opportunities for our students and reinforce our position as the statewide leader in the sciences. Valleybrook, meanwhile, will serve as an important incubator space for businesses in pioneering fields, helping to strengthen and expand our biomanufacturing industry in the region. These are just a few examples demonstrating the many ways ETSU continues to thrive and make a positive impact in our communities. Thank you, and I'll now ask Dr. Green to take the role.
Trustee Allen.
Here.
Trustee Ayers.
Here.
Trustee DeCarlo.
Here.
Trustee Fry Clark.
Here.
Trustee Grisham.
Here.
Trustee Ramsey.
Trustee Segal Jones.
Here.
Trustee Tredway.
Here.
Trustee White.
Here.
Chair Latimer.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Great. Dr. Green, do we have individuals who have signed up to speak to the board as part of the public comment portion of the agenda?
You do not, Madam Chair.
Okay, then we'll move to the approval of the minutes from November 15, 2024, which you could be found in your materials. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
I so move.
Second?
Second.
Are there questions, comments, edits, or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes. Earlier this morning, the Academic Research and Student Success Committee met. I'll now turn to Trustee Ayers for an update on her committee's work.
Thank you, Chair Latimer. In the interest of time, we have a very full agenda today. There were two action items and four information items this morning at our committee. The first action item, Dr. McCorkle introduced the Use of Artificial Intelligence and Technologies for Instructional and Assignment Purposes policy. Our committee approved it, and the provost will work with the campus to make additional policy changes needed and provide detailed procedures on the use of AI to the campus by June 1, 2025. This will continue to be evolving. Next, Provost McCorkle presented a request to provide notification of the adoption of the Institutional Research Security Policy. We passed this in December 2024 that specifies how the institution will safeguard research and development, and the committee voted to authorize the president to notify the chairs of the Education Committees of the Tennessee Senate and House of Representatives for the adoption of new policy. The four information items, we had robust conversation. The first information item was the notification actions from August 1, 2024 through December 31, 2024. There were seven curriculum actions that required THEC notification, including one letter of notification for the New Degree Program of the VES in Digital Development. There were 13 curriculum actions that did not require THEC notification, continued to align with workforce, our region, and our market. Dr. Linville, the Associate Vice President for Clinical Affairs, then presented the Annual Institution Review of Graduate Medical Education. He provided an executive summary of the Annual Institution Review, which demonstrated that the program continues to meet all accreditation standards and the training of our medical residents. The next information item was presented by Dr. Jeff Snodgrass, Dean of the College of Health Sciences. He provided the committee with an overview of the academic, research, and clinical contributions of the college. Since this restructuring has happened, the College of Sciences has grown to include 21 academic programs, which lead to licensure in 14 different healthcare professions with over 1,700 students. They operate four clinics that have served over 14,000 people in the region just last year. And finally, Dr. Joe Sherlin, the Vice President for Student Life and Enrollment, presented an overview of several current initiatives. These included historic enrollment growth for the last three entering classes, as well as the largest on-campus residential population in the history of ETSU. Excitingly, as we continue to evolve and meet the student needs of this university and the region, there is a proposed and planned Student Success Center, a one-stop-shop, and a Student Life Village that continues to work with additional supports for students, especially those at-risk, underserved, first-generation, low-income students. Had a robust conversation afterwards. It's a great committee. Thanks.
It was a great, great committee this morning. Thank you, Trustee Ayers. Our Finance and Administration Committee also met this morning. I'll now turn to Trustee DeCarlo for an update on his committee's work.
Thank you so much. The Finance and Administrative Committee met this morning to review several important agenda items that focus on the future of our institution and its financial health. We began by discussing the College of Medical Tuition for 2025-2026 Academic Year. After careful consideration, the committee approved no increase in tuition rates for the College of Medicine for the upcoming year, reflecting our ongoing commitment to student affordability while managing inflationary costs effectively. Next, the committee approved the proposed housing and meal plan rates for the fall of 2025, which were included in the board's consent agenda. These rate increases are part of a two-year plan to bring our rates closer to market value. Although increases range from 5% to 8.7%, they remain within competitive bounds when compared to other Tennessee public institutions. Additionally, adjustments to the meal plan based on market trends and a detailed discussion of whether or not we wanted Taco Bell or Chick-fil-A were presented, maintaining ETSU's position as one of the most affordable options for students. Don't put that part in the minutes. The quarterly financial update was also presented. Our revenues and expenditures have seen positive growth with tuition, state appropriations, and auxiliary revenues all showing increases. As an informational item, the committee reviewed the criteria for consideration of a tuition and mandatory fee increase. Ms. Graham also presented comparative tuition and mandatory fee information for all the public universities in Tennessee. East Tennessee continues to be an affordable option in the state. The Tennessee Higher Education Commission proposed a 0% to 4% tuition and mandatory fee increase for in-state undergraduate students. For budget development purposes, the university is considering a 4% increase in tuition and mandatory fees. As an informational item, the committee discussed the salary pools in the governor's proposed budget. The campus could receive $2.3 million in salary improvement funding from the state if the proposed budget is approved. An additional $1.8 million would have to be funded by tuition increase, enrollment growth, or reallocation of other expenditures or additional sources of revenue. Lastly, we provided an update on the ongoing projects, including progress on the ProCard program and the budget model redesign. We are making significant strides in ensuring financial responsibility and accountability in all areas of operation.
Thank you, Trustee DeCarlo. And finally, I'll turn to Trustee Segal Jones to provide an update on her audit committee's work.
So normally, my committee is dull and drab, and you want it to be that way, but it wasn't today. We did get a report from Ms. Lewis about audits that were performed since we last met in November. Auxiliary enterprise audit was completed, and the WETS FM Radio Financial Statement Audit was also completed, with no significant issues or findings with either one of those audits. But there's two big highlights, so I might ask for applause later, and since I can't do a cartwheel, Janet, you're going to have to do that for me as our ETSU cheerleader. But the financial statement was released, the audit for the financial, the big one. I call this the big audit. And if you don't look at any other page, look at Page 1. For anybody very interested, I did read this. I might be the only nerd that did. But the opinion was unmodified. That's not unusual for us. This one doesn't happen all the time, and Kristi finished her two-year anniversary was yesterday. She went from private to governmental financial reporting. In two years, we have no findings, none, zero, and it's been since 2019 since ETSU's had that. That is a huge feat with an enterprise this big, all in the midst of ERP conversion to Oracle. So we are blessed to have her and appreciate her. And I've got one more great news. So also, we had a report from Public Safety. Also, the Clery Report was given to us, but the big highlight was that our ETSU Police Department, for the first time, has been accredited by the Tennessee Law Enforcement Accreditation Program. From what I understand, they worked really hard, got this done in six months. The committee that came and presented the accreditation this morning said that that was about the fastest they'd ever seen it done. And also, I did ask, and ETSU is one of the few college campuses that have an accredited police department, so if you will indulge me, I'd like to give a hand to all of those. Finally, I want to say...
It's rare you can clap in an audit committee meeting.
That's my report.
Thank you, Trustee Segal Jones. As noted in the materials in your agenda, you will find several routine items on the consent agenda, including items acted upon during this morning's committee meetings. Are there any items on the consent agenda that members would like to pull for discussion and consideration by the full board? Hearing none, I would then ask for a motion for the adoption of the consent agenda.
I so move.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now we receive an overview of the Athletic Department's strategic plan from Dr. Sander.
Well, thank you. I guess about 14 or 15 months ago, Dr. Nolan and I got together and kind of decided with the changing landscape of college athletics, it was really important that we did a... put together a plan that would help us navigate the future of ETSU athletics. And I think as the landscape of college athletics continues to change, we've been affected by a lot of different things. First of all, name, image, and likeness. As you know, this is a way for college athletic departments to compensate student athletes, the ability for student athletes to transfer as many times as they wanted. Inflation, inflation has had a dramatic impact upon college athletics. The change in conference affiliation, going from five power conferences to now four, and as kind of a nationally geographic mentality. Now you see the University of Miami in Florida in the same conference with Cal Berkeley, so it makes no sense. See UCLA in the same conference with Rutgers. So I think, you know, that has had a dramatic impact on college athletics. And then the elephant in the room, which you probably hear about all the time on the news, is a lawsuit that is called the NCAA versus House, House being the plaintiff in a class-action suit that basically was a $20 billion lawsuit filed against the power of five conferences and the NCAA. And what came out of that was revenue sharing. So just to give you a little idea of what the House settlement is, because this is the thing that's really dramatically impacting college athletics and impacting us, beginning in June of 2000, it's actually the end of June in 2025, the settlement requires $2.8 billion in damages to be paid over 10 years. So what that does for ETSU athletics is we have to pay $288,000 a year to the NCAA for the next 10 years. We have to clear... we have to disclose all NIL deals over $600. By March 1, 2025, institutions must decide whether they're going to opt in or opt out of this settlement. And just to give you a little bit of an idea what opting in means or what it allows you to do, opting in, first of all, allows you, the institution, to basically compensate student athletes for their name, image, and likeness or revenue share. So if you opt into the settlement, the institution will be able to do that. The other piece of that that is pretty major is, in the past, athletic departments have been obligated to deal with scholarships based upon limits or caps that have been established. Just to quickly kind of give you an idea what that means is that in the past, baseball has been able to award 11.7 scholarships over the total number of student athletes they had on the roster. Well, if you opt into the settlement, you no longer will have a cap on scholarships. You will just have a cap on the roster size. So that's a pretty significant difference. And the other thing, if you opt in, all NIL deals or all revenue sharing will have to be shared with the NCAA, go through a clearinghouse, which the NCAA will develop. Opting out just basically means remain the way it has been in the past. You really don't change anything. So that's an important decision that every institution is going to have to make, and they have to make that determination by March 1. So with that in mind, we developed our strategic plan, and I think there are six elements to the strategic plan. You can see them as well as... you can read them as well as I can, but the first one is student athlete experience. And of all the things that we do in college athletics, the most important thing is we provide our student athletes a great experience. And so what we have been able to do is we've really identified 10 areas that we are going to really focus on. In the past, with student athletes, we really only focused on two things for the most part. We focused on, you know, their academic success, how they were doing in the classroom. We focused on how they performed on the field, on the court, on the diamond, whatever. But now we are going to focus on a whole lot more things, everything from mental health to nutrition to career development. But we have 10 areas, and we've started to implement those. But this is a very important piece of our strategic plan. Like I said earlier, you know, the focus of the student athlete is always going to be our number-one priority. And then, you know, because of, you know, some of the things that have happened, I alluded to the $288,000 is a new cost to us every year, you know, we really are going to have to be much more focused on the fiscal management of how we operate the athletic of how we operate the athletic department. The House settlement, that's certainly something that is going to impact us. NIL, the reality of it is, we will have to compensate student athletes if we are going to be competitive in, you know, college athletics. It's the world we're in. Just to give you an idea, the number one basketball player in the country is a young man named A.G. Dip Santa. Brigham Young has basically, is going to pay him next year $10 million. $10 million. That's a lot of money. So just to give you an idea, we're not going to pay anybody $10 million. That would be, you know, I'd be up there with the president's salary, so we're not going to do that. So, but we will, I mean, to be competitive, we will get into revenue sharing NIL. So that has big implications for how we manage, you know, our, you know, our fiscal situation. Inflation is very, is very, when you have 400 student athletes, inflation really starts to impact you. So 4% or 5% raises in anything really impacts you when you have 430 student athletes. Just to give you an idea, when we travel, this is kind of where we are. This was the, this was a trip that we took in 2023. We went to Mercer. You can see that the trip cost us $44,000. This past year in '25, when we went to Mercer, this is a football trip, it cost us $55,000. So that's a 24% increase. That's one trip. So you can see in football and in all our sports how that would dramatically impact how we have to manage our revenues and expenses. Like I said, the revenue share piece is a big part for us. We have to decide what is the, and this is a puzzle. There are no, there are no answers to this. We're going to have to kind of try to do the best we can with this as we move forward. But as we, as we do this, we clearly, you know, we're clearly going to have to make hard decisions. Coaches are going to have new challenges. I talk to the coaches all the time about, you're going to have to decide how you're going to spend your money. Every dollar that you spend, what is the best use of that dollar? Is it better to buy new, you know, five pairs of shoes for the players? Or is it better to use that money to buy a student athlete? I mean, that sounds really crass and cold, but that's the reality we are, we're in. Should we have, you know, 10 football coaches or should we have eight football coaches so we can buy six more players? I mean, that's kind of the decisions that are going to have to be made in the future. So what we're going to do, we're just going to continue to really carefully review our expenses, you know, make hard decisions on what our priorities are, what the allocation of the dollars are based upon our priorities, and then finally figure out ways to increase, increase revenue. But I think the one thing that we really have to realize is that change and innovation is the way we're going to have to move forward. We're going to generate more revenue. This year is a good example. Already this year, we have an 18% increase in ticket sales, which is good for us. It's about $120,000 for us in this year for football and basketball ticket sales. So we're excited about that. There are other ways we're going to try, look at revenue generation. Of course, we're going to try to be more entrepreneurial. Dr. Nolan and I talk about that all the time. How can we have new ways to generate revenue for our student athletes? Facilities are always a challenge. We are, we retain a consultant to look at all our facilities to give us advice. You know, as you probably know, the Dome was built in 1975. That's kind of our major hub for athletics. We're going to figure out a better way to use that and continue. It's a huge asset. We just have to maximize the value of that, that asset. Organization, we're going to look at different ways to get, get things done. We want to be fluid. We want to be boundaryless. We want to collaborate with the institution and use the tremendous resources that are here at the institution. And that's kind of, we're also very interested in how are we going to, how are we going to engage with the public? We have a lot of ideas about doing that. We've done some things already, and whether it's Zooms with our ticket holders, whatever it is, we're going to just continue to look at new ways to engage with, with our constituent base. So that's kind of where we are. Our next step, we have to opt in or opt out by March 1. Once we get the certification of the House settlement, which is April 7, that's the same day as the national championship basketball game. We will then start to implement the strategic plan, establish timelines and assign responsibilities, and allocate resources based on priorities. So that's kind of a, you know, of a Reader's Digest version of what we're doing. Anybody got any questions?
Any questions, comments? Thank you, Dr. Sander.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now we receive a research update from Assistant Professor of Biology, Dr. Melissa Whitaker.
Good afternoon, Chair Latimer, members of the board. It's my pleasure today to introduce Dr. Melissa Whitaker, who will provide an update on a current research project that she's working on. As the board knows, it's always hard for us to pick one faculty member who kind of represents all the exciting research that's happening across the campus. But it's a good challenge, given that you all only meet quarterly. We always try to work to find a presentation that we think you will find interesting. I'm particularly excited today about Dr. Whitaker's presentation because it really leads perfectly and connects to what we were talking about earlier in the Academic Research and Student Success Committee. Dr. Whitaker is a member of the School of Science and Engineering, and she is an Assistant Professor in the Biological Sciences Department, where she leads research on plant-based insect interactions and plant-based ecology. She joined the faculty just in 2023, but before that, she managed Switzerland's Federal Entomological Collection at ETH Zurich, which some regard as the MIT of Switzerland. She advises undergraduate and graduate students in scientific research, and she currently teaches entomology, functional genomics, and a new course that's going to be offered in the fall on medicinal plants. And I'm delighted to introduce Dr. Whitaker. Good afternoon.
Well, thank you, Dr. McCorkle, and thank you all for hosting me today. It really is an honor to be here to tell you about some research that my lab is doing on pollinators. So of course, there are lots of animals that pollinate flowers, but I imagine if I asked any one of you to conjure an image of a pollinator, it would probably be an insect of some sort, potentially a butterfly, maybe a fly. But maybe most of you would think of a bee, and that's rightfully so, because bees are critically important to our global economy and our food security. U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service estimates that bees and other pollinating insects contribute more than $34 billion to the U.S. economy every year. And it's sort of unsurprising, then, that a lot of research goes into understanding pollinator decision-making and behavior for centuries now. And what we've learned in all of this research is that pollinators are surprisingly sophisticated in terms of their decision-making and their cognitive capabilities. They incorporate, they learn and remember a lot of cues that they learn from flowers and then use that to make informed decisions about which flowers they go on to visit and which ones they decide to skip. We've also learned that this plant-pollinator interaction is really complex. We think about it sometimes as a really simple interaction where plants make a reward for pollinators, like a sugary nectar, in exchange for pollinators then transferring pollen from plant to plant. But over the last decade, we've started to realize that plant floral chemistry is really complex, and it contains things that are not sugars and it's not nutritional, things that are really kind of baffling, like neurotransmitters and even plant toxins like alkaloids. So my lab has been really interested in what are the functions and the consequences of these non-nutritional elements that are in flower nectar, and how do they affect pollinator behaviors specifically related to decisions? The problem with this, that we found, is that studying pollinator decision-making is really tedious and laborious if you're going to do it in the field. The best way that people manage is you have a single human observer that's following around a single bee and then recording which flowers it visits, how long it's there, the time of day. And you could imagine that kind of experiment is really difficult to scale up in terms of, you know, geographical scale, but even temporal scale. There's only a certain amount of time a person can follow around a bee and sort of faithfully record its visits. So my lab set out to create something that would be like a higher throughput method of recording bee visitation and therefore understanding their preferences. And we established this collaboration with David Zollinger from Engineering Technology, who's helped us really conceive how we could solve this problem with technology, with 3D-printed elements, some off-the-shelf sensors, and some cheap little single-board computers. The project's really been driven by two of my master's students who I want to introduce today. So Skylar Matheson is here in the back. I don't know, Skylar, will you stand? Skylar is from Coburn, Virginia, and she's an incredibly talented science communicator. She just won ETSU's three-minute thesis competition, so the university-wide competition. And in a few weeks, she's going to go on to Dallas and represent ETSU in the national competition. And then Josh Foley, who couldn't be here, although he's probably relieved because he's very embarrassed if you say anything nice about him in public. Josh is a veteran of the U.S. Marines. He's a single dad, and he's such an interdisciplinary thinker that his contributions to the project have been so critical in combining all these really different disciplines and elements of the project, making it all come together. So the design process, we found, to be really a process, really an iterative process. We would come up with features and functions that we thought would work great in testing the bees, and the bees would have a very different idea about that. They would reject certain features or interact with them in ways that surprised us. So ultimately, the bees were also a great collaborator in the design process. But I'll show you what we've kind of landed on as our basic, basic design so far. So I'm showing a cross-section here of one of our robotic flowers. I have a little demonstration here. So the basic element is we have this hollow green stem that serves as a support, on top of which, we have an interchangeable floral display that we can 3D-print in different colors. And you'll see this very awkward little stalk here. There's a little mini spy cam attached to this floral display that's motion-triggered. So when a bee visits the flower, it starts taking images of that visitation. And if the bee is tagged in some way, we can then use, we can connect the bee visitation to its individual identity. The bee will put its little head inside this feeding hole on the top, and then underneath the flower, it will access a nectar reservoir that we can fill with artificial nectar. We spike it with whatever chemicals we're interested in at the time. And when it does that, when it puts its head in here, it triggers a sensor that automatically records the time of that visitation and the duration. All of this is then managed and saved on these tiny little single-board computers that we program in the lab. And so each flower can be its own standalone unit, or we can put them in large arrays of flowers. So this is an image taken on a tabletop with 20 flowers set out. This is a little bee here for scale. And all of these are done in the basement of Brown Hall, so please be careful if you're visiting the basement today. If you see a bumblebee, it's not our bee. But the bees are allowed to forage freely, and then they can choose between different flowers based on whatever floral cues we're interested in. A lot of people ask us if bees recognize this really funny-looking device as a flower, and I don't know if they see it as a flower or not, but they definitely see it as a food source. So they learn very quickly to visit the flowers, how to feed on them, they congregate on them. And one of our, our favorite examples of their acceptance of the flowers is they tend to fall asleep in them. So it's a very cute habit of bumblebees in nature that they'll take naps inside of flowers when they're out foraging. And we've observed the same in our artificial flowers. They'll often fall asleep in the feeding holes. You can go up and nudge them awake, and they'll go about their business, but it gave us some confidence that we were on the right track. I'll tell you just quickly, a really high-level overview of some of the projects we're working on now that use the flowers, and then some dream projects for the future. So both Josh and Skylar are using the flowers in their master's research, investigating the effects of psychoactive floral compounds on pollinator behavior. So let me tell you about some of these compounds. Two of them are probably really familiar to you, caffeine and nicotine. We know that these are produced by plants, but it's sort of a surprising feature that they're also present in floral nectar in very small quantities in some plants. And previous research has shown that both caffeine and nicotine enhance pollinator learning. They're more able to remember and learn floral cues if they receive those cues with a small amount of caffeine or nicotine. The third compound we're looking into has not been studied as much in bees, but it has been studied in the context of other insects, closely related insects, and that's morphine. And we do see that insects do exhibit a preference for sucrose solutions that are spiked with a little bit of morphine over sucrose solutions alone. And one common element that all three of these compounds have in common is that they're all highly addictive to humans and other mammals. And this is part of a growing sort of body of research investigating whether or not plants might produce some of these compounds, essentially to be drugging their pollinators and manipulate their behaviors in ways that might benefit the plant ultimately. So Skylar sometimes makes a joke in her talks that she says, humans might not be the only creatures who rely on a cup of coffee to make it through the day. We've learned a lot with these flowers about how bees behave outside the nest, and we've become really interested in how compounds might affect them within, within their nests as well. And one project that we're really excited about hopefully conducting in the future is using machine vision to track and observe bumblebee behavior within the nest. And for this, we would take the bees and move them into an artificial nest box, and then we can give each bee an individual QR tag, literally just supergluing a little piece of paper to their backs, and use machine vision then to track the location of each bee within the colony over time. You can get a lot of behavioral information from these location-based data. We can learn things about queen care, about grooming, food sharing, all sorts of things that are happening specifically within the nest from these location data. And the idea here is that we could incorporate this with the robotic flowers to get an idea of how chemicals are affecting bees outside the nest, their performance within the nest, and then get this really holistic vision of how chemicals affect pollinators at the colony level rather than the individual level. All right, let's see. It's been so fun to work on this project with students especially, and also nice to see it get a little bit of traction in the public eye, including some news coverage in local sources over the summer. And there are plenty of people who need to be thanked in conducting this work. First and foremost are Josh and Skylar, my dream team, but also the small army of undergraduates in the Whitaker Lab that have all been involved in taking care of the bees at some point. David Zollinger in Engineering, who's been a wonderful collaborator on this, and a couple other collaborating labs. And I want to give a special thanks to the ETSU College of Arts and Sciences. They funded every last penny of this research through my startup fund. So thank you especially to ETSU CAS. And I'm not sure if I have time for questions, but I'd love to take some.
Questions or comments from the board? Really fascinating. Where do you get the bees?
Thank you all so much for having us.
I gotta know, where do you get the bees?
Sorry?
Where do you get the bees?
We buy them online. They're agricultural products, so they come in FedEx, and we pick them up at Central Receiving.
Gosh. How do you tag a bee?
Skylar, how do you tag a bee?
You have to ask the bee to be there too. You put a little dot, a super glue on the door, and any time you are to pick up this feather, and just stick it on there. Go back and learn how to pick it up.
Brilliant.
She makes it sound easier than it is.
Yeah.
Thank you all for having us.
Thank you, Dr. Whitaker. Interesting. I would now like to ask Dr. Karen King, Ms. Kristy Graham, and Ms. Lori Erickson to provide the board with an update on Voyager.
Thank you all for giving me a little bit of time this afternoon to, to provide an update for our Voyager project. Kristy Graham, Lori Erickson are cosponsors. They're here with me today to support and ask, help answer any questions that you might have. Today, we'll talk a little bit about the timeline, what kind of business impacts we've been seeing from our testing with this system, and then our plan for training. I also wanted to show you this screen just so that you can kind of get a little bit of a glimpse of, we really do have a system now. We really are working within a system and testing all of these functions. And so throughout this presentation, there'll be a couple of images that are actually taken from within the system, so you can start to get used to what it may look like. Just to review our timeline a little bit, we relaunched this program, as you recall, last July. We've been working hard on planning and design since then and have just finished our Conference Room Pilot 2. As we go through the next few months, we're going to be doing a number of things at the same time. We'll be going into other testing sessions. We'll be doing parallel payroll testing sessions, and then finally, the user acceptance testing before we go into cut over and training. So a lot of those things will be going on in Oracle in different environments at the same time. One advantage to this is that every time we move into a new testing environment to test other functionality, we do new conversions, new integrations, new data loads. And so by the time we get to our final cut over for this project before the summer, we will have gone through cut over virtually three or four times by then. So I think this has given us a lot of confidence as we move through this project, to be able to move through those testing environments and be able to... to move through those testing environments and be able to have that cutover practice as we're going. I think that's been really helpful. As I said, we finished our Conference Room Pilot 2. This was our first major testing session with ETSU data. Our exit criteria was 95% of tests that were completed satisfactorily, and so we did reach that 95%. Anything that's not finished has a strong action plan associated with it, and there were just a couple of small things, but we did get to our exit criteria, so we were pleased with that. Next comes our systems integration testing. And this is referred to as CIT-A. It's five weeks of testing. As you can see, there are a number of integrations that we'll be testing over the next few weeks. We started this past week. These are things like parking deductions, integrations with the bank, integrations with estate agencies like Edison, health systems, that kind of thing. We have to test these one at a time, and as you can see, it's heavy in the first three weeks, the last two weeks or so. If there are problems, we can resolve those issues and retest them before we say, yes, that's okay. I wanted to show you just one example of an integration. So you can see that there's, you know, lots of diagrams, arrows. Where does the data come from? Where does it go? How do we have to move it around to get everything to work? So this is one integration. So from the sheet that, the slide you just saw, all of those integrations have this level of planning and detail associated with it. So once we get through with the integration, single testing, we'll start end-to-end testing and make sure everything works within the process. We also realized a number of business impacts in our CRP-2 testing that we feel very confident about. The first is the streamlined application process. And again, this picture is an image in our Oracle system of our ETSU employee recruitment page. So this is an extremely streamlined process, and to apply a potential ETSU employee now probably can apply for a position in around five minutes. And so that's a huge improvement for us as we move forward. What you're seeing here is an example of our web clock and our leave request sheets, and these are as they look on mobile devices. And so we think these kinds of processes are going to be much easier for employees to use and increase and enhance our employee experience. The leave request tool will also forecast how much leave people have. So if you're going to plan a vacation for a year from now, when you move forward to plan that vacation, it'll forecast your leave, so you'll know exactly how much leave time you're spending. The biggest piece and the biggest improvement that we've had in our design has been the chart of accounts. Christy and her team really did take this all the way back to square one, did a complete redesign on the chart of accounts, and I think that, from understanding Christy, we have designed a very efficient framework for financial management at ETSU, and we're really excited about this. It'll give us a lot more accurate data, a lot of data that is more flexible to use and much more scalable. This is an example just of the dashboards that are available out of the box in Oracle. So this one is just an example of analysis by type. We've also improved our supplier registration, so this is an important business improvement for us as well. So suppliers will have a code given to them by ETSU where they can go in. They will then be responsible for putting in their contact information, their email address, their bank information. All of that will be the responsibility of the supplier, and it will then reside in a secure system. So I think that'll be a huge business process improvement for us as well. We've also had a lot of technical wins. One of them is just being in the cloud. But one of the other ones that really does impact our business is auto provisioning. So we'll be able to assign security in the system based on the person's role. So no longer does each person have to request access for a specific account multiple times. If you need access to 50 accounts, you have to make 50 requests. And so this way, we can assign security by roles. People get the access that they need on their first day of employment, and we can get them out in a timely manner as well. Auditors always are asking us, how do, you know, how long does it take you to get people out of your system when they leave the institution? And we have to document that. So this will help us with that as well. Another example of some of the dashboards that are out of the box, and then we move to training. So we're in February. We expect that all of our training materials will be completed in April. We'll start pilot training, in which time we will test actually all of our training materials before we start to use them across campus, to make sure they're accurate and complete. And then we'll start end-user training sometime the end of May, early June, and go through August, and really then throughout the fall semester, because it'll be important for us to be available for faculty as they come back after the summer break into the fall semester. So we'll be continuing training throughout that time. We also have multiple training modalities that will be available. So depending on, lots of people like different things. Some people will watch a video, some people just want the steps, you know? So we have lots of different training materials that will be available. I think the most important thing that we've done here is the Oracle Guided Learning. This is a tool from Oracle in which they prepare these tutorials by the system that we can then move into those particular functions or modules in our system, and we can customize them for our system. But they give the user the ability to get help on a particular task that they're working on in real time. So they can click a button, and it'll help them through the process they're working on now. So users don't have to leave the system and then look for help somewhere and then go back and start again. So I think this will be an important tool as we move forward. This is an example of a quick reference guide, which just shows users how to go through the steps to apply for leave. And in summary, I think we've progressed through our benchmarks. I think we don't have any red flags at this point. We still anticipate that we'll be going live in July, and I do think it will transform our operations here at ETSU. I'd be happy to take any questions.
Are there any questions from the board? So you're thinking July 1, I'm assuming, for like General Ledger? Is that pushing it to?
That's our goal right now. Christy, do you agree?
I do, I do. We've made great progress on the ERP implementation. We're going through testing right now. We are so much further ahead of where we were the last time, and so much more difficult.
Well, I heard the word confidence, and that makes me feel better.
So can I have the countrywide, US? Who's installed it and uses it as a, I know Tennessee's trying to do it.
Tennessee's live. They went live.
UT's live.
UT's live, yes.
Anybody else in Tennessee live?
Vanderbilt.
Vanderbilt.
And we use Vanderbilt as a resource a lot, especially with our accounts payable, and looking at what worked for them, and it seems that they're happy with it.
So what would you say, you cut over in September 1, what's the worst thing that could go wrong?
The worst thing that could go wrong is that we couldn't pay people.
Payroll. That's what we're talking about, payroll.
Yeah.
So how confident are you in the payroll process?
We have complete, you saw the parallel payroll testings are coming up. We've done one. The results were good. Any errors that were in there, we recognized why they were there. They're working on payroll balances now, because if we go over in the middle of the year, we have to have all the payroll balances correct. And so they'll run two of the parallel payroll tests that will have to match exactly, or I would say we will not go live if those tests are not accurate.
And if on September 1 it breaks, what do you do?
We'd run it in Banner.
Yes.
I mean, you have a plan.
Yes. We will pay people, but we will be confident enough in the system when we go live that we'll be able to pay people. We're not going to go live if we're not confident in that. The second thing that we did was we brought on an additional resource. We reallocated a position to payroll, because it is the most important front-facing thing to make sure we've got right. So we are addressing that with additional resources, with testing. The first mini parallel payroll was successful at 85%, but we identified every error in that 15% and have set that up to run in the first large parallel payroll, to be clear. But to be clear, we will not go live if we can't pay people.
I think we'd have to be at a very high confidence level for payroll. That's the thing we worry about the most. The other things we can, and we can fall back, I mean, if we have trouble, we can fall back to Banner. It's not like Banner is going to go away on July the 1st. We can always fall back, but of course, we want to be successful.
Do you use students in any way to assist in menial tasks so they learn?
We have not used many students on this project at all. This is, you know, the HR and finance piece.
Too much data.
The data has to be validated. All the programming's pretty high level, so we have not yet. The student system comes next. You know, that's what Oracle did a demo of the student system for the CIOs in the state yesterday. So they're starting, working, they're working now with the University of Tennessee to get the student module fully developed. It's not live yet. They're expecting, they told us yesterday, maybe 2028, 29, maybe even 2030.
Not a lot of days off between now and July.
No, between now and July will be intense.
Dr. King, with this update, will students notice any difference in the things that they do as far as like FWS jobs go, or, you know, just regular work-study positions? Everything's the same?
Will we be able to pay the student now thanks to NIL?
We haven't built that into the system yet, but we may have to, I guess.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
I would now like to ask Dr. Nolan to provide his president's update to the board.
Madam Chair, members of the board, good afternoon. It's on behalf of the faculty and staff, it's my pleasure to be before you today to provide an update on a number of items impacting the institution, both at the state, federal, and local level. But despite all of the things that are changing around us, one of the things that I remind myself of on a daily basis, and I remind the staff of us as well, is that the mission of the institution remains unchanged. So as we move through Voyager transitions, as we move through NIL, or whatever the issue may be, all of this is grounded in a mission of improving the quality of life of the people of the region. So here are the elements that I'm going to touch on, and let me just go ahead and jump in. I want to first set the stage with where we are at East Tennessee State University in terms of a broader context of a system of institutions. The Tennessee Higher Education Commission is presently going through the development of a strategic master plan for the university's community colleges and TCATs across the state. And as with any good master plan, they've gone out and surveyed people to gain their opinions on what are the critical issues. So here were the critical issues that were identified through the statewide survey of policy leaders and opinion makers about issues of concern in Tennessee higher education. This isn't that different from things that we talk about at every board meeting here at East Tennessee State University: student success, mental health, campus safety, return on the investment, that's jobs to careers to majors, et cetera, maintenance and develop of the facilities, quality in teaching and learning. I'm showing this by design to reaffirm to the board that our strategic plan that's in place is going to be consistent with the strategic plan that emerged from T.HAC. And we may have to make some adjustments, as the chair directed me to do earlier this week, to ensure that we remain in compliance with federal and state elements. But the nuts and bolts of what we do on a basic level at the institution is aligned with the things that are of concern across the state and of the things that are emerging as priority issues for T.HAC: workforce needs, campus safety, student success, costs, and public perceptions of higher education. But the very first element up here was student success. So let's now look at the very first strategic pillar in your strategic plan: access and success. I'm pleased to report that this spring undergraduate enrollment is up 343 over this time last year. Overall enrollment is up 279. So the budget that you approved in November remains on target to close through the year, and this is a leading indicator as we move into the budget process for the coming year, that enrollment continues to trend in the right direction. Step back over time, here's spring enrollment over time in comparison to prior years. So you can see we have fully rebounded from the downturn of COVID. But this number for me is important because then it's a leading indicator of what fall-to-fall retention will look like. You can see fall-to-spring retention for freshmen is now right at 90.4%, which is back up from where we were at the downturn of COVID. So a leading indicator that we're making progress towards the student success goals that this board has stressed are of such importance to the institution. Dr. Sherlin referenced in a presentation this morning where we are in terms of our outreach efforts, and here's data that further validates the success of those outreach efforts. You can see our applications are up 800 over this time last year. So we're making continued progress towards hitting that class of 2,100 freshmen for the fall. But I want to step away from just the basics of enrollment and focus on a student success aspect that was within the strategic plan as approved by the board. One of the elements in 125, Chapter 2, is we declared to the board and to the community that we would build a P-20 network in the region, and we would deepen our connections with employers. So these are some of the things that your staff is engaged in that align to the goals that you outlined in the strategic plan: improving the college-going rate, building out dual enrollment, ensuring that students are prepared in high school for career and transition to college, improving retention and persistence, looking at adult participation, and then finding meaningful employment inside and outside of the region. These are all elements that are part of the work that we're doing in the P-20 space. Now, you know this data, college-going rates declined after COVID, but what are we doing with the high schools to help drive improvements in those college-going rates? This is a glimpse of a high school feedback report that we're providing to high schools and districts across the region. And it's not just us. We're doing this in conjunction with the community colleges and the independent institutions in the region. So this isn't just ETSU. This is ETSU providing a coordinating role. Think of us kind of like as the T.HAC of Northeast Tennessee, of not only collecting data, but then sharing that information. So we'd be able to show where students from Smith High School went. Did they go to us? Did they go to community colleges? Did they go to private institutions? We would be able to show what the ACT scores are and how these students did in first-year courses. So this is powerful information for principals and superintendents as we're looking at aligning curricula and changing college-going cultures. This is all work that's being built, and I know some on the board have a lot of questions about state data, so we're trying to do some replication here, but as we're getting better access to state data, it's going to strengthen the work that we're building here. Here are the programs that folks enrolled in, the bulk of it in the humanities, as you would expect, but look, once you get past the humanities, the number of students majoring in nursing, that LPN program I'll get to again in a second. And then here's the retention and graduation rates. So within the region of every 100 high school graduates, 72 went on to college and were enrolled after a second year, and 42% graduated on time. That's just not us, that's across the region. So those are the types of data that we're So those are the types of data that we're building out at the direction of the board to build connections across the P-20 sector. But it's more than just partnering with other educators. It's partnering with business and industry. Trusty Ayers and I were at Summit last week in Nashville, where one of the presenters from STRATA talked about the Bloomberg grant. This region has a $15 million Bloomberg grant, of which we are the principal partner with Ballad, and that grant is aimed at educating students in high school to receive their LPN while they're in high school, and then for that degree to articulate and transfer seamlessly to a community college or to East Tennessee State University. We're driving that initiative, and rather than Ballad replicating staff, they just took the leadership team that we have for P-20, and they're leading this effort for Bloomberg. That same basic foundation and structure has been replicated, and earlier this month, we applied for a $2 million grant from THEC that would allow us to take this structure of an LPN to BSN, an expedited path, and make that available to other counties in the region in partnership with TCAT Moorestown. So I'm trying to give you some examples of how your master plan is being put to work and put in action. Next, I want to do a hard shift to operations. This is a slide that I provided to you earlier in the year, and it's just a reminder of the size of the budget. You looked at budgets earlier today, so these numbers should be pretty familiar. But what I want to put a focused accent on is what we're now doing to prepare for the next year. So the budget call to campus went out yesterday, and in that budget call, we are building next year's budget on a constant enrollment level. So we're not forecasting enrollment growth. We're not forecasting enrollment declines. We're predicting that enrollment will remain constant. We're going to use the new budget model. You've heard us talk a lot about a new budget model for campus under Kristi's leadership and a leadership of a shared governance committee. That model is just about done, and when it is complete, that will provide the foundation for the distribution of revenues moving into next year. Part of that is we reset base budgets. We needed to do that because we've adjusted the structure of the institution. As you heard today, the colleges of health sciences significant larger than it was before. Before, it had 14 programs. Now it has 21. So we had to ensure that the program budgets move forward, and the budgets for the college in their new structure were set appropriately. We've talked to you a lot about Huron, and we're looking at efficiencies. For those who have to tolerate me on a daily basis, they know my disdain for the manage in which we've handled vacancies on this campus, decentralized. Now vacancies are rolling up to the unit level, and each vice president is having to manage those vacancies, thereby allowing us to get a better handle on revenues and expenditures across campus and to prioritize how those vacancies are moved moving forward. So these are some of the elements in which we are using to structure the budget moving forward. And the good news is, we are in a solid position as it relates to the primary components of budget. The bulk of the revenue that supports the institution comes from tuition and fees, but a pretty significant portion of it comes from the state. This year, Governor Lee's budget not only is balanced, but it's making solid investments in operating, solid investments in capital, and solid investments in salary. The chair noted the, what I think is just truly an absolute opportunity to change science education on this campus, which was Phase 2 in Governor Lee's budget. We're working to ensure that not only that funding, but funding for Valleybrook remains in the budget as it moves through the legislative process. But if we emerge in May, when the legislative session comes to a close, and we've received that funding, that allows us to completely renovate Brown Hall. And if you've been through Brown Hall, most high schools have better science facilities than we do at this institution. So it's bringing Brown Hall into the 21st century. So that's the $53 million you see in capital outlay, and then the 8.5 is general maintenance plus the Valleybrook funding. I mentioned the fortunate position we are in this state as it relates to state support. So if you went back to 2008, and if Dr. Stanton was making this presentation, he would have said that 51 cents on the dollar came from the state, 39 from students, and you would have seen a diminution over time in state support. Well, that carried forward until about the middle of the last decade. And now each year, year after year after year, a bigger portion of what it takes to operate this institution is coming back from the state. Almost 40 cents on the dollar now compared to 36 cents on the dollar in 2017. So we are fortunate to be in a state that's investing in higher education, and that's one of the reasons we're able to hold down the cost of tuition and fees for our students. Where that matters is for our employees. Thanks to the leadership of this board, at the November board meeting when you approved budgets, you authorized us to not only provide an across-the-board salary enhancement to our faculty and staff, but you created a supplemental pool of $3 million that would allow us to make market adjustments. We're getting close. Now, I've said that to campus for months. It's kind of like the one-time bonus around Voyager. We're getting close. We're getting close. But I'm proud to announce, we are there. We will, by the end of March, distribute market salary enhancements to faculty with the goal of, as stated in ETSU's strategic plan, 125, Chapter 2, the goal there is by year five to hit market. That is our goal, is by year five to hit market. We'll be close. We may not hit it, but we'll be close. We will distribute $2 million to our faculty by the end of March to make market adjustments. And then as we finalize the new classification and compensation structure that's built into Voyager, that will be the system through which later in the spring, we'll make staff market adjustments. And then because the board approved those pools effective November, any market adjustments would be retroactive to November. So I wanted to follow back up with the board that that work is underway. Stated to you that we've been recognized as a great college to work for, would remind the campus that the survey period's getting ready to open back up. We take these results seriously, and we drive change towards these results. So would encourage the campus, when that survey period opens, to take advantage, to provide your feedback. We talked a little bit about facilities. I won't touch on every single one of these slides. There's a lot of work that's underway to enhance facilities across this campus. Phase 1 of Brown is already occurring. We're in the space that was in Northeast State Downtown. Our faculty will be moving back into Burleson in March 25. It is a beautiful space, and I anticipate that our faculty will really be pleased with the investments that have been made there. We're continuing to build out the Commons. Bucky statue will be here at the end of spring. Every time I walk through the center of campus, there's something new happening in the academic building. But there's a lot of work here. So just wanted to give the board a glimpse of the capital that's currently underway. And then we're going to add on to that Phase 2 of Brown. We're going to add on to that the Integrated Health Sciences building. So there's a lot of work that's being done by our capital staff, and I want to thank them for their diligence. There's a theme here. It's cold, it's snow, so every single one of these pictures has snow in it. I don't know where Dr. Hoff found this one, but this is a picture that's going to look very different in a couple of years as the building across campus is complete. We've shared with you a number of the strategic initiatives this morning. Dr. Sherlin touched upon enrollment management, financial aid optimization, et cetera. You saw an example of why it's important to focus on research at this institution, and the research that our faculty engaged in is broad and diverse, and will continue to invest in research, being mindful, however, that the landscape of the federal government is changing. And at some point in the next couple of months, wouldn't mind to come back at a future board meeting and talk about the implementation work that is occurring as we build out schools across the university. I don't want to focus too much on Helene, other than to remind the board that we still remain focused on serving our students, faculty, and staff who were impacted. Just because Helene was in the fall doesn't mean it's not still with us. 10 students on this institution lost faculty members or loved ones, 2 lost their parents. You heard that we will take alternative spring break activity, and rather than going across the nation, we're going to engage on rebuilding here. But the rebuilding isn't just from Helene, because our neighbors in the Appalachians were impacted by floods just these past few weeks in southwest Virginia and in West Virginia. So that mission of giving back remains central to who we are. Legislative agenda, this is similar to a slide I shared with you in the fall. We're playing both offense and defense concurrently. We want to ensure that the THEC recommendation around state appropriations moves through the budget process. We've got some work to do on pharmacy. Unfortunately, the pharmacy recommendation that THEC made was not in Governor Lee's budget, so we'll advocate and lobby for that in the next couple of months. We want to continue to ensure we secure the resources that are in Governor Lee's budget for Brown Hall and Valleybrook. And then there's some things that THEC is doing to deepen financial aid opportunities for students. And most of this impacts TCATs, but that ultimately will impact us, because if a student takes advantage of the new scholarship opportunity that's in the governor's budget and goes to a TCAT to major in welding, now all of their clothing and equipment will be paid for by Tennessee Promise. We can then pick that student up in our engineering technology, mechatronics, and later full-blown engineering programs as we articulate all this. So from my perspective, any investment in financial aid is an investment that benefits the institution, even though these investments are going to benefit the TCATs first. We'll get those students in time. There's a lot that's happening on the federal level. I'm not going to go into all of the elements of what's moving around in the landscape. I just want the board to know, we're paying close attention to the things that are moving at the federal level. We are monitoring the impact that changes could have on the university, both changes to the indirect cost rate at NIH, which may spread to other entities, as well as grants that are being defunded. So just, we are closely watching what's happening in Washington and ensuring that we're prepared to respond in any direction that things may unfold. As things are unfolding here on campus, would remind you of things that are transpiring. I hate that I'm going to miss Anthony Doerr, because the book All of the Light You Cannot See was the read for the campus for this year. It is an outstanding work. If you've not read it, please ask the provost for a copy, because I think she still has some extra copies. It is an inspiring book about the power of individuals to overcome adversity. But I'll be in Nashville preparing for Senate Finance the very next day. And then a little bit of self-deprecating humor. Trusty DeCarlo made fun of my diet earlier. I'll make fun of my ability to pick people. As we were looking at individuals to serve as keynotes for the Festival of Ideas, the provost brought the idea of LeVar Burton. And I said, I don't even know who that is. Well, it's sold out, and it's sold out times 10. So if you want someone to select something, have the provost make the choices, not I. But please, put these on your calendars, because both are continuations of the why. This is a Festival of Ideas, a celebration of the best of the institution, in which we bring nationally-recognized speakers to the institution to raise our sights a little bit. And then you see the three remaining Broadway performances at the Martin Center, just a glimpse of some of the things that are happening across campus. But I want to close with a couple of celebrations. We heard reference to the outstanding work of ETSU Public Safety earlier today, but that work occurred because of the leadership of our interim chief of police. And I'm pleased to announce today that interim chief Tipton is no longer the interim. Effective documents that were signed earlier this week, I'm pleased to announce that we have a new chief of police on a permanent basis at East Tennessee State University. Thank you, sir, for your leadership. And one last celebration. Every now and then, I have the opportunity to be a part of something that is just simply magical. And last week, I had the chance with Dr. Heather Levesque and Dr. Carla Leibold to get out across the state of Tennessee and provide scholarships to students. Typically, most students learn that they have a college scholarship by getting an email or receiving a letter in the mail. But what we had a chance to do, thanks to the coordination of staff, was literally show up across the state and surprise students. So here, you see pictures of myself, as well as trustee Dorothy Grisham, in action. And these happen in all kinds of places. So in some, we went into the classroom. At Science Hill, the assistant principal went in and said, Charles Allen, come to the front room and bring your stuff. And you could see the sense of pain in this person's face. And then I walked and say, on behalf of the Board of Trustees at East Tennessee State University, it's now my honor to bestow upon you a Quillan Scholarship, one of the most prestigious scholarships that we have at the university, and for five of these students, a scholarship that guarantees admission to the Quillan College of Medicine. We had the chance to do that in Barrett High School with a student who had no idea what was coming, and what made that one all the more special is her parents were there. We had the chance to do it at Providence High School, where a student, literally, as you can see, is just enthralled with joy. So sometimes we lose sense of the why. We can get wrapped up in all the noise that's happening around us. But for me, last week was an affirmation of the why. Students with 36 ACT scores that could be anywhere, but look at the joy in their face because they learned that they were accepted here. So we outlined a Voyager system today. Why are we putting a Voyager system in place? So we can celebrate more of these moments. And for me, this is the why of what we do. And trustee Grisham, I want to thank you for being at the one in Chattanooga. I couldn't be there because I had to get to Nashville. And with that, madam chair, that concludes my presentation. Before I do so, on a why, there were questions that were raised earlier today about the combination of scholarships and financial aid. So we've provided you with information that gets sent to every student who applies to the institution that talks about the combination of cost. We'll follow back up with that on a lunch and learn and a deeper dive. But these are select scholarships. We can't put those on a flyer or in a folder, because these are highly competitive. What is in this material is the basic scholarships that would accrue to any institution, any student who applies to the institution. And with that, I'll close with a picture of a snowy ETSU and see if you have any questions.
Since there is no need for the board to convene an executive session today, I would like to ask for a motion to adjourn the Board of Trustees.
Salute.
Second. Y'all in favor?
I am.
Thank you. We're adjourned.